Everybody knows I just had a conversation with Phil. He was having an issue connecting and I suggested he try and call in on his phone. The audio will be better for him that way, so I'm trying to join.
Morning, Cory.
Morning. I will remind everybody to mute their microphone when they're not talking. And I would ask the clerk if she'd be so kind, Amanda, to call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chair. You want me to start now?
Yes, ma'am, we're all here.
Okay, perfect. Commissioner Bear?
Present.
Commissioner Walz?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Present.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Mr. Poleski? Commissioner Mahoney?
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Shatwell?
Here.
All present.
Looking for public comment? We're reaching out to Michelle right now to find out if anyone signed up for public comment.
Everybody look deep and thought this.
Concentrating.
So there's no public comment at this time. I'm going to entertain a motion for the minutes from the February 4th meeting. Moved by Bear, supported by Williams. Any corrections? deletions? additions? Hearing none. With a hand sign, all in favor, please say aye. Those opposed with the hand sign, please say no. Minutes have passed unanimously. We're having some technical difficulties with getting J.CAN on the program. So I'm going to ask the board to indulge me and let us go to appointments. Committee appointments, which are by the chairman. And I recommend Daniel Mahoney to be Chair of Human Services, with Corey Kennedy being Vice Chair of Human Services. Darius, do you second that? Motion has been seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Welcome to your chairmanship, Daniel.
Thank you.
So now at this time, I'd like to move to appoint newly selected Commissioner Poleski to Lifeways with our blessings or condolences, whichever it may be. Is there a second? Second from Corey? Any other nominations from the floor? I see everyone sitting on their hands. All in favor, please signify. Those opposed? Congratulations, Earl. You're on Lifeways. Is J.CAN on?
I can say, Michelle, if we could go back and bring in J.CAN, Zoe, I believe, is online.
So Zoe's in. She just got promoted to panelist.
Okay, we have Zoe and Monica Moser, so that's great. Zoe, if you could give an update and overview on J.CAN.
Morning Commissioners. Thank you for having us come to the study session this morning. We've been reaching out to our legislators and we just wanted to give everyone sort of an update on what J.CAN is doing as well as the Incident Command System. They have been sort of intertwined as we, as the city declared a state of emergency. So I'm gonna make the assumption that all of you have heard of J.CAN. Can, could I just get like a no? Okay, then we'll start at the beginning. So March 10th, I think, was when the state had its first positive COVID case. And I think on the 12th was when I got the call that school was going to be canceled after the 13th. So that first week of when things were starting to really ramp up is when I received my first call from someone in the community. And who that person is now is lost to me and all of the craziness that's been happening. But, and I happened to be with Kentole at a training that day. And he was receiving the same kind of feedback as was Regina Penny from Nonprofit Network. And what we were hearing was concern from the members of the community who lived in poverty, maybe they're on assistance through my office. Maybe they're working but living paycheck to paycheck. And as things were sort of ramping up in the state and in the community, folks were going out and stocking up at the grocery stores, as oftentimes we're told to do when an emergency might be coming. But the concern was that for folks who didn't have the money to go forward and do that at that moment, that by the time they were able to get their next paycheck and get to the store, that, that things would be gone and they would be not able to care for their families. And so it really started with that concern initially. And so on that Friday, the 13th, a number of us came together as community leaders. We, many of us have really great relationships because of the collaborative work we're, we've been doing all these years. And so we came together for our first conference call to really talk about how we can ensure that people in the community are not panicked and to let them know that they're not alone and that we're gonna work as a community to help make sure everyone is taken care of. And so we decided that we would continue to meet. At that very same time, there were some really, some small grassroots groups immediately going out and serving the needs of the people. So you may have heard of Parcel to Girls here in Jackson. They actually were just on the Kelly and Ryan show yesterday. They immediately started reaching out to particularly mothers who had young babies and meeting their needs around diapers and formula and basic needs of young families. Places like my office and Community Action Agency and United Way, where we have some closets with donations, were able to help them get what they needed to, to get out to the public. So immediately, the community started to see that we were all coming together to help them and they were also getting their needs met. So, so as we continued to meet, we probably, I would say, we met every day for the first couple of weeks through conference calls. And into that second week is when the city declared a state of emergency. So when the, when the city declared a state of emergency, it activated the county's emergency management plan. And the specific area of the plan that, that was activated was Annex E. And that is the Mass Care Annex. And I am the responsible person as the Director for the Department of Health and Human Services for that particular annex of the emergency management plan. And so, so Mayor Gobies, myself, Jason Brining, who is the Director of the County EOC, and, and others on all of our teams came together. And I created my Incident Command around Annex E. And I included people like Monica Moser, who is here with me. She's one of my liaisons to the community. I also have Kentole and John Willis, Toby Berry from Community Action Agency and others who are, who are part of my Incident Command related to mass care. And if you've ever looked at the Mass Care Annex, it, there is a lot of things listed there. And as we all know, this emergency is different than, say, a tornado that comes through and leaves families in need. And those, in that situation, we would rally the community and gather donations and have people bring things in in large groups. And then we would have folks line up to get what they need in large groups. And we immediately needed to do things differently because we didn't want to bring people in, we didn't want to expose volunteers. And so we had to create a plan in which we could meet people's needs, but allow them to stay home. And, and so because we had sort of started J.CAN a few days earlier, J.CAN actually grew from about 10 or 12 people on that first call. We now invite somewhere between 60 and 70 folks in the community to participate on weekly J.CAN calls. And we probably after the first week or so, created some work groups. So as certain areas of need began to bubble up, we created work groups amongst the J.CAN members. And so we have a basic needs work group. We have a health education slash panic control group. We have sheltering and housing. We have food security. We have childcare and, and school. So again, for essential workers, we were wanting to make sure that we knew, that they knew how to get childcare if they needed it and then how we could support our school districts. And I might be missing one. But we created those work groups and we've now sort of intertwined them. So each of those work groups, yes, serve as a, a team under the section of the Incident Command. So then our, my chiefs of my Incident Commands around planning, operations, logistics, all, they all have a small team of people that can help them as well. So it's really worked out well for our, our Incident Command and it's kept us in touch with our community. Now, I didn't, I didn't ask Rashmi to be here specifically for this call, but she did speak to Representative Alexander when we met with her. So at this point, I would have asked Rashmi to speak, but she's gonna talk to you later and give you all the update on the, the actual virus. But I think it's important to know that we also stay very much connected with the Health Department. So Michelle White from the Health Department is the liaison for our J.CAN and our Incident Command. And so we're able to stay in touch with what the Health Department is doing. And then, of course, the Health Department is connected with Henry Ford Allegiance Health. So in that way, again, we're, we really are trying to make sure that we are working together and collaboratively and not working in silos. And we did find that out in a couple, couple places, but we will be able to work those things through. So I think I'd like to hand it over to Monica Moser for a minute to just talk about some of the things we've accomplished.
Good morning, everyone. It's good to see everybody's faces. So what have we actually been doing? Zoe kind of gave you the organizational structure. So right out of the gate, our first problem to tackle was the Interfaith Shelter needed to figure out how to social distance their residents. And that team that Zoe talked about jumped into action and were able to secure some funding to help move those residents into hotel rooms temporarily and be able to really deep clean the shelter and think about how they might space residents apart differently. And then open back up for business. So the logistics of that were pretty tough. And as you can imagine, hotels aren't providing food. So we had lots of folks jump to action to try and make sure that those folks had all the things they needed while they were hotel guests. And some of our organizations stepped up to help fund the folks that fit under their particular umbrella. So Zoe, a couple of those families that had children could, could have been funded through, through the Department of Health and Human Services, some through Community Action Agency. And you've probably heard that United Way and the Community Foundation worked together to establish a response fund. And to date, we've been able to raise about $300,000. And used, we used some of those dollars to help pay for the remaining residents from the Interfaith Shelter. The other thing we've been able to use those dollars for and to leverage our health system and other folks is to provide for those basic need items like diapers and formula and wipes and cleaning supplies and stuff that were hard to find on the shelves. And because of especially our relationship with the hospital, they were able to order some of the kinds of formula that are maybe more specialized for infants that are having health difficulties. And we were able to harness grassroots organization, actually several grassroots organizations, but Zoe mentioned in particular Parcel to Girls, to help deploy those resources. So you have a trusted neighbor, a trusted community member, identify, someone you can go to to identify your needs and then a safe way to get those things delivered to your home. And so as Zoe said, those partnerships and relationships have been really important. And we were lucky that we have built those over the last few years. Another thing that the city did was restored water to all of the homes that had been shut off so that they were able to wash hands and be safe as far as being able to contain the virus. We secured funding for cremation for families. We ensured that people who live alone and were being released from the hospital had access to food and supplies for support. So that coordination between health system and, and, and the community. We've been monitoring the release of prisoners, you know, through parole and others, other ways that they, especially those who have tested positive. So that there's, we've been having a conversation about how do we both quarantine and isolate folks? And we're still working on that problem. And right away, we were able to, we knew we had to have an easy training, some training materials to help volunteers be safe. So how if someone was gonna volunteer to deliver diapers and wipes, how, what were the protocols they needed to use to be safe when they did that? So as United Way gets volunteers who sign up, we're able to do that training with them so that they're safe when they're out and about in the community, trying to meet the community's needs. And that training manual now has been spread to other parts of the state because we were way more organized early. We were, we were able to share the resources that we've developed with other communities. And I guess lastly, I'll say that, you know, as the community development, block grant dollars that are gonna be coming in along with the community support, block grant dollars that Community Action Agency will be receiving and the FEMA dollars that United Way are receiving, we're, we're working together. And then the COVID Relief Fund that United Way and Community Foundation are working on together, we're making sure that those pots of money are working together and not duplicating things. So we've been really transparent with the plans. And I've been really proud of especially Community Action Agency and the city's CDBG plan to, to make sure that they're really aligned. And that hasn't always happened in the past. So to be at the front end of planning before the plans are released has been really, really, really helpful. Do you have any questions for me about the kinds of things we've been up to and doing? Oh, Daniel?
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's so good to see you guys' face. And I just wanna say thank you so much for all of the wonderful work that you've been doing in the community. I've been trying to pay attention as much as possible to, to all of the moving parts surrounding the work that's going on in the community. And just definitely want to commend you guys for everything that you've been able to accomplish. The only question that I have is how can we help or support you as a board of commissioners? Is there anything that we can do to help and support you in the work that you're doing?
That's a really good question. We've tried to put all of the resources that we've developed on both the city's website and the Health Department's website. But just making sure that people in our community know that those resources exist. Like how do you, how do you recreate safely? There's a really simple, easy flyer that we've developed that's more of a pictorial of how to, how to be safe, how to park safely at the park, how to, I think I shared those with the NAACP. Like how, how do you, you know, how to wash your hands so that you're washing them long enough and with enough soap, that kind of stuff. And we are actually able to find those flyers in different languages. So we're trying really hard to make sure that all of those resources is available. And the more that we can share those with community members across townships, villages and city wards would be great. I know, and the other thing I think that we are, we are doing, but maybe we can make it more evident is as things arise, like now the Interfaith Shelter is COVID positive. So as you probably know, and the nuances of that and what we need to do, like we're constantly pivoting and adjusting as things come up. And so having open communication between groups is really helpful because I know that the jail, the county jail said they had the ability to provide some meals. And so I think we've been working on that together. I don't know if it actually happened, but things like that are really helpful when there's an identified need and we can shoot it out quickly. Then we can respond together. Tony, you had a question too, I think.
Monica, can I, can I add to yours just before?
Sure.
So in addition to the things that Monica suggested, there are lots of people out there who want to know how they can help. And so again, because typically what we would probably do is accept donations, but that's not necessarily the safest way for this particular emergency. We are asking people to make donations to the COVID-19 Response Fund. They can do that online without leaving their house. They can mail in a check to United Way. And that allows the, the team then to purchase the items that are needed in the community for cents on the dollar. And then the other thing that we want to make sure that you all know is that how, how do people get help? And we are referring people to start at 211. 211 is part of our, our J.CAN calls. And they have a list of questions that they're asking people when they call in at the beginning to make sure that they are, end up pointing those folks in the proper direction. And then I also wanted to let you know that we just, just yesterday sent letters via email out to all of our faith-based leaders and many of our, our leaders of organizations around the community. I think Daniel from the NAACP, the email, as well as Albert Hitt through ALPAC and some of those other groups, giving a, a whole list of the attached flyers and that safety plan that we had created. So moving that information along. If you happen to get it and you know of a group that might be able to use it, please feel free to do that. And we also, we also, you know, want to be transparent in that we, we, we understand the, the need for us to get back to our, our economy and opening up. But we are very concerned about moving too fast. And so we are very much in line with what the Health Department and the Department of Health and Human Services are recommending. And in doing that, we're actually planning, planning forward for those things. So one of the things that we want to make sure everyone in our community has is a mask. If a mask is going to be required to go into a grocery store, we want to make sure that someone who might not have a mask is, can't go in and can't get what they need. So we're working on creating a way to either order or have masks made so that we can get them to the community. And then we're also looking at putting together plans for businesses and nonprofits to help them know, here's the things I need to do to be able to reopen. And, and here are some resources, so sort of a checklist and then some resources for them to be able to do that. But, but we ask, we ask you for your support in all of our work. And definitely, if you ever have any questions, we want to be able to answer those as well. So, so with that, I will hand it over for, to Tony for a question.
Well, I'd like to thank you for the local work you've been doing. It's good to know that the local population is receiving help that they need. I have, I have some problems with the way the state and the way J.CAN's recommendations are worded. The shutdown originally was supposed to be for two weeks. And that was to prevent hospitals from being overrun, overwhelmed. And doing that is not going to, it never could reduce the number of people that eventually catch COVID-19. That's never gonna happen until we establish herd immunity. And locking citizens up in their homes is not going to establish herd immunity. Waiting, I hear some people say we gotta wait till we have a vaccine. But the human immuno-virus, HIV, came to this country in late 1979, early 1980. That was 40 years ago. There is no vaccine. So I hear people, not in this presentation today, but when I hear the people say we've gotta have a vaccine before it can open up. Well, that might be 40 years. We can't do that. Non-COVID cases are not being treated. People are not getting treatments for cancers because the hospitals aren't receiving patients. That's a problem there. Many articles I've read and people are predicting that the shutdown is gonna cause more deaths than the disease. People are gonna die from the shutdown. Citizens are allowed to make their own decisions on their own health needs. If an individual is, has comorbid conditions, they need to worry and they need to stay home. God's blessed me with a fantastic immune system. I don't need to stay home. I don't need to be locked up. When you lock up the sick, you have a quarantine. You lock up, you have tyranny.
Tony? Tony, do you have a question?
Chairman Shatwell, I didn't know questions was the only thing we Chairman Shotwell, I didn't know questions was the only thing we could do. How about just some constructive input?
All you've been doing is listing news articles, sir. Would be appreciative during this time if you would ask questions of Monica and Zoe so that way we could move on through the agenda if other commissioners have questions. I saw Earl raise his hands. I have several questions I'd like to ask.
Okay, I can phrase everything as a question. Question one. What are we going to do to get the economy back open immediately? Phasing it's not going to help. Question two, for every 1% increase in the unemployment rate, we have a corresponding 1 and 1% increase in the suicide rate. So what are we going to do to get people out of their homes, back into work so we don't see a spike in the suicide rate? During large economic hardships, drug addiction, death by drug overdose goes up, spousal abuse goes up. So what are we going to do to get people out of their lockdown homes, out being productive workers as people need to be, so we don't experience these negative impacts? What are we going to do so that the non-COVID cases where people need to have cancer biopsies performed, when they need other health procedures informed, or performed? What are we going to do to get our hospitals back open so that the day-to-day medical care, that without that medical care, people will die? What are we going to do to get our hospitals open back up so cancer patients can go in and get their treatment? What are we going to do to make sure that the numbers of deaths that get counted as COVID deaths are actually caused by COVID? What are we going to do to make sure that if I get exposed to COVID and I expect I'll be totally asymptomatic and I die in a car crash, what do we do to make sure that my death doesn't get listed as a COVID death? So how are we going to fix those things? Thank you.
Thank you. So I think from, from our perspective, we don't have all those answers. We are, we are leaving obviously the decisions around opening and how to open to the, the leaders at the state level who are, are telling us how to do that. We do feel like our role though is to take those guidelines and make sure that there are resources around those, those guidelines. And so that is one of our goals is to stay abreast of what the guidelines are and to provide resources for the community. And we are providing resources, not just for individuals, but for the nonprofit organizations and in order that they can stay open. And I know Monica is involved through the chamber with the small businesses and, and there's a lot of work being done in the community to, to help those small businesses stay open as well. You made an excellent point around potential suicide and mental health. And I, that was the one group that I forgot to mention. We have a work group on mental health resources and Mary Beth Leonard from Lifeways and Bob Powell from Family Service and Children's Aid chairs that work group. They have ensured that there are resources, resource lists out in the community so that individuals and organizations know what their resources are around counseling and therapy. And I, my, my son is a therapist in another county and they have moved to doing therapy just like we're doing this call. And so it is still occurring. And I know Bob Powell has a very specific substance abuse program and they, he was very clear that that program was not going to close down as, as other businesses may have because of that need. So, and then I guess I would also make sure that everyone understands that my staff, my children's protective services workers, foster care workers, even my assistance payments workers who are helping people who might be applying for assistance now who haven't had to ever in the past, are all essential staff and are all working. So of my almost 180 employees, I have three that are in the office functioning to take mail and do some of the very necessary in-person things. Everyone else is working from home with their computers and, and getting the, all the work done, getting applications taken care of and food assistance cases open and Medicaid cases open. And then we have a, a small group of what we call field team workers and they are children's protective services workers who are handling the, the child abuse and neglect allegation complaints that come in, as well as adult services complaints that come in. We have a couple of adult protective services workers as well. But from a community perspective, you are absolutely right. These, these types of things, this domestic violence and abuse of children doesn't stop because we are all in our homes. It does make it harder to see because you don't have the educators and the professionals around to, from the outside to see what's happening. So from a community perspective, really keeping an eye out for families, calling in concerns if you have them and, and, and allowing us to go out and check on families is important. The other thing that we started last week is that we went back several months and looked at cases that we did not open. So they were allegations that came in over the last several months and we went out and did an investigation, but we did not open them because the concerns did not meet the criteria. We have now been going back and calling those families and checking in with them just to see if there's any resources that they need. And we've had a really great response from everyone who we were able to get in touch with. We've been able to connect people with food resources, with beds, with, with other kinds of needs that they have and just to let them know that they're not alone out there and there are, there are people in the community who can assist them. So, so there's a lot, a lot really going on to support everyone. And I think maybe, maybe in Rashmi's comments, she can, she can talk more about some of the other questions that are more related to the medical community.
Any other questions for us? Earl?
Good morning, Zoe and Monica. It's good to see you and thanks for being on the job. I have, I have three questions. The first one's going to be to the two of you. The second one will be more to, I think to Mike maybe. The third one will be kind of more of a general question. The first question is whether we have a mechanism for measuring how many, how many folks we serve and, I mean, we're always, sorry, accountants are a little concerned with that from time to time. I don't expect an answer, but I wonder whether that, that mechanism is in place. Okay. The second question will go to Mike. And as to county resources that are being applied to this effort, you know, where are they going and, and whether even in this difficult time of our own county budget?
I've read your chat.
Have we applied any incremental dollars to this effort? And I've got one more question, Mr. Chair, after, after those two, if I might.
But the, as far as the resources go, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what, how much money we've spent here and there. Money's a lot of gated, allocated and it's moving through the channel, some of it. Just most recent, you know, you, you guys made a commitment to an MOU for hotels. I don't know if we have anyone in there yet, but most of our resources are coming through the health department. And then of course, there's all the PPP, PPE stuff and we bought thousands of different things. Most recent were the 600 masks we purchased for county employees. So the numbers are starting to add up. We're tracking it. We have a list. Last I saw was up to about $30,000 we had expended. And we just keep track of it as we go because Nate, or not Nico, Mac, Mac is wanting to know how much we're spending per week. So we're breaking it down into weekly. That 30,000 was where we were for like a week.
So my, so my final question is really a little bit more high level strategic is, is whether there's a point in time where we can declare, declare success and kind of end the J-CAN process or if in your view, it appears that some, a longer-term structural need exists where this can be integrated with your existing programs. I guess I don't know whether there's a specific answer to that, but I'm just some kind of asking that, that higher level question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, I'll respond to your first question. So as far as the dollars that United Way and the Community Foundation are deploying, we're keeping really close track of the number of residents that are being impacted and we're developing a weekly update that's kind of like a dashboard of how many diapers, how many, you know, units of cleaning supplies, that kind of stuff, how many households. And so we can definitely share that with you. And I think it's on the United Ways website and ours as well. So, and we've done some social media around it. The, the broader question though, I, I think it would be really hard to tell how many people we've impacted by disseminating informational materials and how to wash your hands safely and recreate safely and stuff like that. But we, we are trying to really broadly share those resources so that, I know that some of our grassroots organizations have taken some of those flyers and put them in the bags with the diapers and the wipes and the baby formula so that, you know, we're disseminating that way. And Zoe, I don't know if you have other ways that you can think of that were kind of tabulating or keeping track of our impact. And then to the last question, I guess I'll let Zoe take that too.
Yeah. So I, nothing comes to mind in addition to what Monica has said. Our goal really is to, to get the information out as widely as we can and, and answer anyone's questions. I do want, you know, we, we want everyone to know that J-CAN is an open group. There's no invitation necessary. Anyone can be added to the phone list and the, and get, will get an appointment and they can, can call in and, and ask questions or be part of our team. We do consider this short-term. We, we already have a, a great collaborative network in place in the community that is working on long-term systemic issues. And so this really is in response to an emergency. I'm super proud of it, but I, it, it is not meant to go on into infinity. It's meant to be a, a short-term. Get us through this emergency, which we hope does not end up being as long-term as some say it could be. But we will be here during, during that time. And I do think it's important for the county commissioners to, to understand that we are helping people all over this county. This is not limited to the city. Partial to Girls has delivered to places like Springport and Clark Lake and Napoleon in addition to places within the city as well. And so, so that, I think that's important for all of the commissioners to know that this isn't limited to, you know, a few neighborhoods in the city. It's a, it's an emergency that's being felt all over.
Other questions, commissioners?
If I could. As United Way stopped its promotion of swooping in and buying up inventory from different retail locations, I know initially they spoke to, if you find something or know where, know where diapers are or whatever, they've, they recommended contacting them so they could get in there and buy it, buy it all up. I'm hoping that they're being a little bit more thoughtful in their process of purchase. Number one. Number two, my next question would be, have we done any analysis to what we did at Interface Shelter? Well strategically, the plan and implementation was interesting. Tactically, I think it kind of fell real hard on its face. We were 36 hours before we fed those people. They were unaccounted for for that 14 days. We had people traveling all over. We have a resident currently that tested positive and two employees. We had an expectation of the Interface Shelter then feeding those people because of issues, that food wasn't set up soon enough. I'm hoping we're learning from, from this so that if we have to activate this again in the future, that we can do it and that there's a better accountability of where those people are when they're quote unquote 14-day quarantined, we find out that they were wandering around the state. I just, I just, that, that would be my questions on that. And your outside the city limits answer would be, would be nice to know those statistics, Zoe. True impact because I've gotten contact from supervisors saying they've run into a difficulty getting supplies to their residents. So I just would like to know if there was a direct contact with the supervisors. There are 19 of them in Jackson County. And that analysis would be helpful also, just, just so going forward, we don't have problems. Thank you.
Sure. I'll answer part, part of the first question. So what, you're right, at the beginning, United Way was rushing out to, to scoop up stuff of, so, for residents who were the most vulnerable and couldn't do it themselves. But now we've been able to, or United Way has been able to order things in bulk. So they just got like a half a semi-load of diapers and toilet paper, I think it was, Zoe. So they're trying to be more strategic about, but as you can imagine, everybody's having a hard, a hard time finding items that are in high demand. And so, but I think we've, we've figured that out now that they've, and the hospital again has been a great partner in ordering baby formula and, and shipping it directly to us. So, and I think the Interface Shelter, I think this is showing, first of all, the Interface Shelter is a nonprofit that has its own board of directors and a brand-new executive director. So I think this emergency is kind of showing the fragileness of some nonprofits, especially when you have a brand-new leader who, who is really green and has never worked for a board or had to manage staff. And so I think, you know, we're trying to support that nonprofit as much as possible and yet, you know, each nonprofit is receiving its own marching orders from their own boards of directors. And so it's, it's an interesting tension that most nonprofits who are in the front lines are responding to. The Community Foundation is no different. We're a, a nonprofit and we're being asked to help deploy all sorts of kinds of money that, small business loans and grants that we've never done before and trying to figure it out on the fly. So I think it, it just kind of exemplifies how fragile our systems are and that our systems aren't perfect and that we have a lot of work to do. And hopefully we are kind of keeping an eye on the things that we're learning and when we can get back out of an emergency response, maybe be able to, to, to use our experiences and improve those systems.
Yeah, and we are, we are actually currently working on this, the issue of shelter and how to make sure that we always have an open, functional shelter so that we don't have the time, the, the time period in between that I think you're speaking of, Commissioner Shotwell. We, we did work We, we did work really hard to make sure that food was provided to everyone who could not stay at the shelter, but were at hotels and we partnered with our school districts. So the, the folks who were in the hotels were on the north side of town. And so Northwest Schools provided breakfast and lunch to all those families who had children. And, and then we were able to get JPS who had just started doing suppers. We were able to have JPS do suppers for these families. And we had a volunteer who went every day to Parkside, picked up those suppers and delivered them to the families who were in the hotels. Good news, as of last Friday, I think all of the families that were in the hotels are actually housed in apartments now. And that's some, some other great work that happened with our housing commission is, is that, that these folks are now housed. And then we've also had great work. So I think the other, the group that we haven't talked a lot about, but that you may hear about is our seniors. We were, Region Two is part of our J Can work and there were a couple of elderly folks that were in a hotel. Region Two took them on in terms of assisting with hotel costs and making sure that they had meals as well. And they are looking at how, getting those folks housed as well. So it's just, definitely there have been areas of learning and small gaps. But the, the way that we have all come together to meet the needs of, of our most vulnerable is, is pretty amazing to me. And you should all be proud of, of your community.
Other questions, commissioners?
I did have a couple, a couple of comments. One, well, for housekeeping, I would say that this, so everyone knows, the state declared a state of emergency on March 10th. The county opened up REOC virtual, if you will, a little unusual, but we opened it up two days later on March 12th. We didn't have any cases yet, but we knew full well that it was coming this way. The city opened on the 17th, March 17th. So they were, you know, after us a week, week or so. Be that as it may, what has been really, really apparent and amazing is frankly, how everyone's come together. I think it's been said a couple of times now, you know, Jackson's blessed with a plethora of resources of organizations that take care of us, do their best to take care of the, the most needy among us. They've been doing that long before this and they'll do that long after, I'm sure. Zoe has done a phenomenal job. Is there a problem? Okay. Zoe, Zoe, I would say has done a phenomenal job, guys. What, what a lot of people don't realize is Zoe is the director, if you will, of the Human Services Section of the Emergency Operations Center. So it all pivots around her in this area. And frankly, for this particular crisis, this emergency, most of it's Human Services. That's really what it is. It's not like there's a train derailment or an airplane crash or any of those sort of things. It really does revolve around that. And I know all these organizations immediately recognize that, hey, we have people who are vulnerable people who don't have baby formula and things like that. And they all immediately rushed to, to, to the aid. And Zoe come in right after that and started helping, bringing them all together, coordinating, organizing so that we didn't have duplication of services so that we could, you know, make it more cost effective and efficient to do. And she's done a phenomenal job. And, and unfortunately Zoe, I think we've got a little bit more ways to go before that's all said and done. So if there's no more last questions or comments, we will move, Daniel, I believe, has a question.
Sorry, just a kind of question slash comment in, in reference to communication amongst the townships outside of the, the city. So I guess, I don't know if this is a question or a comment, or I guess a combination of both. But I know we have a emergency communication system that I've asked several times about us having the ability to use to be able to spread the knowledge of the resources that we have available through J Can because they've come to me several times asking if I can help advocate for that. So in, in response to any, any township supervisors who feel like their citizens have not gotten that information, I guess my request at this time would be, what would the harm be in us using that emergency communication system to let people know that one, they can call 211 to find out about additional resources that we have available? As well as providing information about resources outside of 211 that are available around this so that people can all be notified at the same time?
If I may, Daniel, they've been notified to where the resources are. What they're running into is a little bit of slow response. They don't, they don't need a 911 phone ring to get that information. What they need is a response at the other end of the line when they reach out to them. The, the problem is not them being aware of resources available. It's getting the resources to them. That's where the, that's where the disconnect is at. And, and I believe once things are, pathways are clear, people understand that and they're able to work through it. But it's knowing who to contact and they've not received themselves the numbers who they should call. Would you like, you know, so who they call is the commissioner that they're aware of. So that, that seems to be the fastest and easiest response. I've fielded phone calls from the, from citizens within, inside the city. So, so it's getting the information out to the people. You're correct. But once they receive the information, it's getting responses back to them that can be helpful.
Other questions, comments regarding to EOC, J Can?
Is there anyone that could send us a list of those 19 supervisors, an email group of them? We could, we could immediately send them the same communication that we sent out yesterday that has contact information and all of the attachments?
You probably have that list before this meeting's over.
All right.
Delane has your email.
Great.
Anyone else on this particular topic? If not, we can move on to Health Department. Zoe's going to give, or not Zoe, Rashmi's going to give us an update on our, the state of the county and when it comes to COVID-19. So Rashmi?
Good morning all. Can you hear me okay? Great. Okay. I just wanted to give you an idea to start off with what our numbers look like countywide and statewide. And then I'll give you just a brief run-through of some of the things the Health Department's been working on through this response effort. So the numbers that I have as of yesterday is, we usually update them by noon on our website each day. So as of yesterday, we have 366 positives. 169 of those are male, 197 of those are female, and we have 22 deaths in our county. And then statewide, the numbers show 43,950 cases, positive cases, and then 4,135 deaths. So as far as those numbers, just to give you an idea of the, of the deaths that we have, I would say about a third of those are coming from our nursing homes, assisted living, independent care facilities, those type of facilities. So those do seem to be the, some of the facilities that we focus on the most in terms of implementing community mitigation strategies, helping them understand infection control practices. And of course, being one of the most vulnerable populations, you know, helping to keep them safe as much as possible. So the other piece that we've also been working on is, as you've also been talking through this meeting, is working with the homeless shelter. Unfortunately, due to those cases, as Commissioner Shotwell indicated, we did have to shut the shelter down. And in doing that, you know, we gave them some options to consider for the food. You know, the sheriff was, was gracious enough to offer that as a resource for them because we didn't want them preparing meals on site. One of the things that the shelter does is prepare meals for like area churches on site as well. And we didn't want that risk to, to potentially transfer to another facility or location. So we tried to help them secure some resources there. That is a challenging population. I appreciate Commissioner Shotwell's questions earlier in regards to, you know, the transient nature of that population is hard in that keeping track of where they are and where they're going and what are they doing? You know, it can be difficult. And I think that's part of the reason we try to shelter in place and not transport them somewhere else, transport to another facility where they would have to, you know, understand where they were, things like that. And then the Health Department could, you know, do the case contact tracing through that effort as well. So, you know, we continue to work with the shelter. I'll also mention there's another place that opened up as an emergency shelter at the Calgary Church. So they're helping to, they're taking some individuals in terms of housing needs right now. Fortunately, they don't have any positives. We've been working with them to, you know, make sure they're maintaining good infection control practices and, and doing things appropriately. Let's see, the other pieces that we're working on, we, we work with the hospital in terms of reporting to them what our numbers look like each day. And if we're seeing any challenges there, that's also where we hear about what's going on with the prison system. And certainly the prison systems, I know many of you have asked me questions regarding that. That being in our county, that does present unique challenges for us. But we've been able to establish a good relationship with the prison system and the, the healthcare individuals working within that facility to assure that they're maintaining, you know, proper infection control practices, you know, giving PPE as needed to inmates as well as staff and working through those processes with them. So one of the things that the prison just started doing, many of you may have heard of, if you haven't yet, is that they are doing mass testing of the prisoners there. So that would include asymptomatic individuals as well. So they have the resources to be able to do that and they're continuing to do that. I believe they're doing that statewide as well. I think they just started that in the U P. Perhaps it was last week, I think, where they just started doing that in the U P as well. And then I'll, I'll bring up, I'll talk about the piece about the healthcare services that I know the question came up from Commissioner Bear. There was recently a guidance that was put out by the state in terms of this whole piece of the reopening where the hospitals could now open up to do the critical care issues, such as the cardiac procedures, those that you mentioned Commissioner Bear, that, you know, are critical and life-saving. And then for those non-elected procedures still, that they may be seen as potentially non-emergency, not really necessary at this time. They're required to submit plans to the state as far as how to potentially reopen to provide those services. So that just came out from the state last week. So that's one part of that whole reopening process of getting to that level of normalcy that, you know, is key to all of that. So in terms of other pieces that we're working on, we're also working with the county right now with human resources specifically to design a business toolkit for all of our county departments. Essentially what this toolkit would include is things like, you know, how to maintain safe infection control practices, make sure you're wearing a mask when you're working with customers or working with your coworkers. You know, if you need to put up barriers when you're working with customers, how to do that safely. You know, working through those sort of processes and how to do that for each one of our departments so that when we do get back to, getting back to the offices and getting to that level of where we're working in the workplace, how do we do that safely? So we hope to get something out by the end of this week in, in conjunction with HR. That would include a level of a plan and some check sheet, checklist, some instructional things that department heads can do to, to, to do that safely. Let's see, the other piece that I'll mention finally would be in regards to the FEMA reimbursement. I know that we had talked here last month about the America's Best Value In and utilizing that as a potential quarantine facility. We haven't opened that yet, up yet. Fortunately, we haven't had a need to do that. But if it came down to that, if you recall, we had a number of ancillary costs that would go along with that in terms of feeding individuals that are potentially housed there, some of those kind of things. So I'll be working with Mike soon, once we can pull this all together, about how we're going to apply for FEMA reimbursement to get some of those costs covered, if in fact we need to open up that shelter. I think that pretty much covers the wide expanse of, you know, things we've been working on. As we, I guess just finally, as we look at reopening businesses, things like that, I know some of that's occurring this week with the construction workers, as the governor had indicated. So, you know, we're, we're glad to see that and we'll certainly be ready with our sanitarians in terms of being able to do those reviews and inspections as people request those. I think that pretty much covers what I wanted to, to cover from the beginning of the event. I know there's a lot of things in between there that you may have questions about.
Commissioners, question, I see Cory's hand went up. Dave, after that, and then I believe Steve had a question too.
Hello Rashmi.
Good morning.
My question is, I've been following, I've been reading as much as I can on the, on the COVID-19 outbreak as well as how certain communities are documenting it. And I've noticed some are keeping records and making it accessible to the public, the positive cases by zip code. And I'm wondering if we consider doing that?
So that's a great question, Commissioner Kennedy. I think I did have a question from the media in regards to us being able to release the information that way. It was early on in the event and I think some of my concerns lied with privacy issues and how much of that, you know, if we only had five cases and that potentially tells you, you know, where five individuals live, you know, I don't know if that necessarily protects the privacy of individuals and things like that. You know, it's something that we could potentially look at maybe with our GIS department and how to do that. We do have, as I mentioned, 366 cases now. I think some of that we probably want to address, you know, how is that information to be used? You know, who is it available to? Where is it posted? Like those are just things we probably want to consider as we, as we think about if we want to put that out there.
Okay. I just think it would be useful for people to see, you know, where the major outbreaks are. Should be taking caution anywhere you go these days, but particularly if you're in a hot zone. You know, you'd know, boy, really be on your Ps and Qs. My second question is, and it's because I've been hitting on the prison facility so much and a lot of correctional facility employees live in my district and have reached out to me. First question is, the last time I calculated it, about 25% of Jackson's positive cases happen to be correctional facility staff. Is that still accurate, would you say, give or take a couple percentage points?
I'd have to look at our numbers, Commissioner Kennedy. Sorry, I can't offer, answer that offhand, but, you know, I don't know if of our 366, I'd have to check to make sure how many of those actually were like prisoner employees and that kind of thing. But, you know, I do know that they were working on procedures to ensure that they were being given PPE and that they were screened appropriately coming into the facility as they came to work. And then we were working with them to, like if, if they had to be isolated or quarantined at home, things like that. But, you know, I can take a look at the numbers and, and see if I can get you some information how much of, what percentage of our positives are essentially prison employees.
Okay, because the PPE is what really concerns me. I want to make sure, particularly the people that have the highest interaction with inmates. They have the mask, I believe that's the N95 or KN95 mask. That's the only one that actually protects the individual themselves, correct?
Well, they were actually, N95, so just to, just to explain a little bit about that. And N95s are the ones that can keep a lot of the particulates out. They do have to be fit tested though, in order to provide that suction and the seal appropriately around the mouth area. Surgical masks can be also beneficial. And so at least to provide that barrier piece to, to keep droplets and things like that out. So I think the prison was utilizing surgical masks and giving like three at a time to prisoners as well as staff as they were screening them and then, you know, if they needed to replenish that supply, they were doing that as well.
It would seem to me- It would seem to me that it would, it would be a good action on our part to press the state to get guards the type that can be fitted and that's the most effective. They're in a very dangerous situation and some of them don't have a choice but to show up to work. So, and at least like to see us recommend that to the state that they're giving their employees who have a high interaction with a population that's got a high percentage of infections to get the right equipment, the best equipment. That's all.
Sure, yeah. No, I appreciate that comment. I think with the machinery too, and the N-95s, we share it with Livingston County, I believe it is. So, you know, if we weren't in an emergency situation, then, you know, it likely would be where we could get that machine, take the time to fit test individuals, you know, that kind of thing. You know, I don't think we had that luxury at this, like, in this juncture in this event. But, you know, I, I understand what you're saying in terms of being able to ensure that they have the proper equipment as well.
It was Dave, Steve, and then Tony.
I've got three questions for Rashmi. First, working off Cory's issues. Is the corrections department still transferring prisoners around, you know, or have they stopped doing that? And I say that because I think at the beginning there were a number of, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but positive cases that were transferred to prisons in Jackson County. You can answer that one first.
Sure. So, yeah, at one time, Commissioner, while there was, where they were using one prison facility to transfer all of the positives and using that to isolate and quarantine them. And then, you know, now they've been smarter about establishing within each of their facilities some level of isolation beds. So they're calling them COVID beds and establishing, you know, some level of individuals that are not sick and keeping them away from the population that is. So I, I believe those transfers have been minimized at this point. It's not happening, you know, as much as it was initially in the event.
Thank you. Secondly, everybody talks about the flattening of the curve. And would you also say that it's accurate that as they do more testing, that the curve could actually go up because we're learning of cases where, especially where people may not be exhibiting symptoms, but could still potentially be positive? Would that be accurate too?
As far as like how that impacts the curve, are you asking as far as asymptomatic individuals or?
Well, yeah, just mainly I'm making the point, I think, really in the form of a question, that everybody looks for the flattening of the curve. But I think the reality is that as we do more tests of more of the population, the numbers are probably going to go up because of that that we would not otherwise know of. Is that accurate?
It is, yeah, absolutely. You know, we are fortunate in our county that we've got a Henry Ford Health System that started doing that testing March 14. And then the Center for Family Health came on board early part of April. And they've established three different testing sites to be able to do that. So you're right, as we, as we continue to test more individuals, we had a good conversation with our first responders last Friday, I believe, in terms of individuals that were interested in being tested, though they were still asymptomatic. And we're working with occupational health that they can establish a plan for who's at high, medium, and low risk there. So that way they could get tested as well. So, but you're absolutely right, the more we, we test individuals, the more we're going to see it. It is in our community and, and, you know, those numbers would continue to increase.
And do you have any idea of the length of time it takes to get the test results back? Do we have the, the rapid testing yet that tests very quickly, or is it still days and days?
Unfortunately, we don't have the rapid testing. You know, I think we are able to get them a little bit faster than we were, unfortunately, in the beginning of the event. I know people were waiting a couple weeks at a time. We've been able to cut that back significantly, especially when Garsha Labs came on board. So that was definitely helpful there. I think unfortunately, Center for Family Health is utilizing Quest Labs, I believe. And I know some of those labs are still taking about five days to, to still come back. As far as the rapid testing, I think it can be useful, however, I'm not sure on a mass-wide scale how useful they can be. The ones I've heard of has really has a throw, a throw put in terms of how many tests they can run and stuff of, you know, less than five, I think it was at one time when I looked at what those machines were like. So as far as if we want to do a mass number of testing, you know, I don't know if we can do that at a rapid rate if, if, you know, they're only putting out a few number of tests at a time. So, so, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can with the resources we've got. But certainly having Garsha Labs on, on board has been super helpful with all of that.
Thank you. And then last question is for Mike. Mike, we, I think somebody asked you earlier about how much we spent dealing with this. And you didn't have a firm number. You're guessing somewhere around $30,000, I think I heard you say. And is it not accurate that all of those costs, as long as we track them, I think Jason Brining can apply for reimbursement for those things that are related. And really just a shout out to our O.E.M. Director, Jason Brining, that's been doing a great job managing that, getting these masks out and other PPEs.
Asked and answered. That's exactly right. That's why we're keeping careful track of all those costs, everybody across the whole county. Regardless of what department, whether it's legal or otherwise, we keep track of those costs.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Good morning, Rashmi.
Good morning, Commissioner Shotwell.
You, you at the beginning of your presentation mentioned a number of positive cases. How many do we know have, what we would consider have been cured or have stopped being affected by it? And how do we measure that number, number one? And number two, when we tested some people and while they tested negative at the time of their testing, they were exposed to somebody, and after their 14 days, are they supposed to go back and get retested?
Sure. So first of all, I could, I can get those numbers for you. Unfortunately, I don't have the number of those that have been cleared in terms of, you know, being able to go back to work or go about their daily business. So I can certainly get those figures for you. In terms of the retesting, I can tell you that we've been looking at the, the CDC has this like gold standard for retesting, if you will. So if an individual, say, for example, you went in to get testing and you were positive, we would retest again after several days. I think they're changing that now. It was initially 14 days. I think they're looking at 10 now. So that, you know, we continually look at things like that that are, that are changing over time. And you would get retested and then, you know, wait several more days and then hopefully, you know, you're coming to, down to like a negative test in which point we can, we can clear you. So not every county, I can say, is utilizing that procedure for several different reasons. One potentially being resources. Not every county has the resources to test and the capacity to do that as we do. We're fortunate enough that Henry Ford has got those resources to do that. But, yeah, we do have a procedure that we follow, that, you know, that Henry Ford follows and then we potentially follow to understand, you know, who's being cleared and how can they be cleared to go back to work and things like that.
Well, I, I'm aware of some people that have been, that tested negative, were asked to quarantine themselves at home when they were not at work, but because they're important people to the process, have been working right through it. But they would like to know if they can, you know, go to the grocery store, if they can go do other things after their 14 days are up. And, and are we retested? Is that what you're saying? They, they can get retested?
Well, if they were, if they were negative, Commissioner Shotwell, and then, you know, and they wanted to get tested, you know, we would, we could, you know, they could go potentially and ask for the testing again. But that process would start in terms of, you know, what we look at as far as do they need to be isolated? Or do they need to be quarantined, you know, things like that? So, you know, you can't say for certain if they had one negative test two weeks ago, that, you know, they'll certainly have a negative test, you know, if they wanted to get retested at some point. So that process would start, you know, again. On the first responder piece, I think those that you mentioned as far as essential workers, you know, we do treat them somewhat differently. Understanding that they have work that they need to do to do out in the community, whether they're first responders or healthcare workers, things like that. So we look at a different process for that in terms of getting them back to work.
Okay. I will let those people know that they need to call, not come in, and find out what's going to go on because some of these people have been working at a known site where we've had, we know we have people that have tested positive. Can you walk through what is done on this history that you do of a person who's tested positive? Or, or what goes on when you do the follow-through, please? Contact tracing?
Sure. Yeah. So what happens is, so an individual would go get tested at Henry Ford or Center for Family Health. We're notified through the system and then that they are positives. The health department gets those positives. That's when we start the case contact investigation. And during that process, we usually, we connect with the individual as soon as we can. Try to find out, you know, where they work, who they've been around, who's in their household. You know, all of those type of questions we ask, and we ask them very pointed questions. You know, where have they been over a certain period of time since the point that they were infectious? You know, if they had attended large events, you know, what kind of things and activities were going on at that time? So our nurses do all of those, all of that questioning and ask all of those pieces of information. And then we also recommend that the individuals stay isolated if they can. I know a lot of individuals, you know, if they don't have a, a home large enough to do this, that might be challenging. But we try to recommend that they stay isolated from other family members. You know, utilize a separate bathroom, you know, get food, you know, put, like they are eating separately, that kind of thing. And, you know, wiping down surfaces across, you know, across the whole household as regularly as possible, things like that. And so that's what kind of is involved, just in a nutshell, with a, with a case contact investigation. So any one of those individuals, you know, based on when they became symptomatic to what they've been doing all of that time, you know, could have anywhere, you know, it's hard to really predict, but they could have anywhere from 10 plus to 20 plus individuals that they may have been in contact with over that timeframe.
Thank you, Rashmi. I believe Tony had some questions. Anyone else have additional questions? Okay, Tony.
Hi, Rashmi. Morning. I'd like to reinforce what Commissioner Kennedy had said earlier about the need for the N-95 masks for the staff at the prisons, and probably for all of our first responders that are in close contact with people. And I'd like to reinforce his comments and because of, I want to ask you if you're familiar with a 2018 study by, conducted by the Center for Disease Control. They were looking at the transmission of viruses related to the normal flu season. And their conclusion was that the cloth masks and the surgical masks did nothing to stop the spread of viruses. Whether it was the mask was on the person who was already sick and they didn't want to spread it to others. Or whether the mask was on a healthy person that didn't want to catch the virus. Centers for Disease Control said the masks do nothing. Are you familiar with that study?
I'm not, Commissioner Bear, unfortunately, but I do know that, you know, throughout this event, I think the CDC has said that cloth masks can provide some level of a barrier, as, as does the surgical masks. So, you know, I think that's why, you know, they say that's better than not having anything that could potentially spread droplets or spread aerosolized, you know, particulates in the air, things like that. So I think that's what they continue to maintain is a face covering is still beneficial or helpful to that situation. So, so I, I do know that's what they've been saying throughout this amount.
All right, I'm just concerned because Center for Disease Control and other agencies are now saying things that contradict what they said previously. That they're, they don't seem to be even referring back to their own previous studies when they're making recommendations for today. I don't like bureaucracies that like to get bigger and bigger and more and more powerful. I'll resist that as long as I breathe. So I'm, I am concerned with the mandates for wearing masks. When agencies that we rely on to predict our health and our concerns say that they're absolutely no value. So that's my concern and maybe you can look up that 2018 study by CDC and see how, see all the recommendations were at that time. Okay, that's the only question I had for you, Rashmi. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions, commissioners, or comments? You know, it's the health officer. If there's anyone who's going to know, it would be her. And I have asked Rashmi to appear at all of our meetings, so therefore next week and the week after. That way, you know, when we have a meeting, she'll be available to give a little update. And of course, we can ask her questions at that time. And in the meantime, you're always welcome to send her an email or text or myself as well. And wouldn't be a problem at all. Then seeing, hearing none, we'll move on. Or are we here? Other items? None? Unless you have some, anybody? So we're back, back to public comment. Do we have any more public comment? Michelle?
That was no, negative.
Any commissioner? Cory, Daniel, Darius? Go ahead, Cory.
Okay, first is, you don't have to answer now, Christopher. If you could just update me in an email, I had a resident reach out about the construction going over on Detman Road. It's giving him problems. He's just looking for a finishing time. He says it looks like it just needs to be asphalted over, an exposed pipe. It's over by the Rite Aid on the east side. And that, that was it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I think that was, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say thank you for the appointment to the Chair of Health and Human Services. And then also thank you to Rashmi and everybody else working on the front line of this situation in all of our departments. And I appreciate all the answers to all the random, probably previously answered questions that I've sent out. I just try to make sure that if I get questions that I don't know a direct answer from, that I forward them to the proper channels to get accurate answer on that question. So thank you to everybody for the work that we're putting in on the front lines of this situation.
My comments were the exact same. Just wanted just to say thank you to Rashmi, to Zoe, to Monica, and to all, all of those that are out working to bring unity at a time of disaster currently. So just thank you to all of those that are just working even more than they can. If there's anything else that I can do to help, please be sure to let me know. And congratulations again to Earl, to Danny on your appointments on today. And let's just continue to do whatever we can as a county board to make sure that all of our constituents that live, not just in the eighth district, but just all over our county are make, are getting the things that they need. So if there's anything that we can do, let's continue to serve our communities. Thank you. I have nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? Okay, so Monday we'll be using Zoom again, setting up the same program. Be ready for, for that programming. If there's nothing else, we're at item 11, adjournment. Talk to everyone Monday, if not before.